Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, October 20th, 2020, School Committee Meeting. I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Natalie Barrows, Student Representative.
Robert Mullin.
Jeff Boe.
Mike Moran.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Julie Westerchi.
Anthony Tenerola.
Joe Masina, Business Administrator.
Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to take, uh, make a motion to take nine C out of order.
All right, we'll second that. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry seven zero zero.
So, Mr. Chair, we have some of our best and brightest from Tinsborough High School here to join us tonight. Professor Rogers is here as well to do introductions. You know, I think one of the best things that we get to do is hear from the students in our schools and our community. And they're gonna talk to us about, uh, the beginning of the school year for them, how it's gone so far. And, um, you know, just to turn it over to Mr. Ogden.
So, thank you for having us here tonight. Um, we are fortunate enough to be joined by our senior class officers, Natalie Barrows, who you are very familiar with, um, as well as Megan Hogan, Sophie Damari, and Trevor Freelove. So, um, fortunately for me, they're gonna get to do all the talking, right? So, I am here if you have any questions at the end, so.
Gather up.
First slide. Just tell us what you want to share.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so, I'll talk about like in-person and remote learning. So, in-person, um, it's pretty good, it's pretty normal, just the mask is the difference. Um, I still get to like work with all my classmates and everything, and it's pretty normal other than that. And then, remote? Remote's fine, I mean, it's just, it's just been hard for me, especially in math, just to talk to my teachers like privately about different things. Or like, I used to be able to just stay after school and like talk to them, but on certain days, I can't do that, obviously. Um, but other than that, remote, it's been fine, 'cause even before this, we've used Google Classroom a lot anyway. So like, I've known how to use it and everything, and that's how we've done it before, so it was kinda the same. And then, and obviously, the whole, um, wifi going out has changed a lot of it, but that's obvious, so.
We'll be talking about that tonight, too, as well.
So, what's new or different for lunches? We now have four lunches where we have two people to a table, where we have a green sticker for first lunch. So you have one person on one end and one person on the other. And then, when you switch to the second lunch, you have two yellow stickers, so the people sit on the opposite sides. And then, we also have outdoor seating as well, where you have to be six feet apart. For passing time in the hallways, we have two bells now. The first bell is for seniors, and then the second bell is for juniors, or the freshmen and sophomores. And then, for signage, we have, in some classes, we have the, um, you can sign out in Google Classroom to leave the classroom. For bathrooms, and for mask breaks, we have five-minute mask breaks, which is good, 'cause we get to go out. And if we're six feet apart, we can take our masks off and just have a little break for a couple minutes.
Um, so for athletics, um, the biggest thing is wearing masks, obviously. And, um, you can't practice in the rain, which, that's been kinda difficult the past few weeks, just 'cause of how much rain we've had. Um, but overall, I think we're just all really happy that we're able to participate in, um, RF, our sports, especially the seniors. They're extremely happy with how everything's going.
So, for closing activities, um, for Peter, Ms. Marty started work organizing the play this year called Cups. And the play will be available for live viewing through Zoom on November 20th. And Cups is a play, which is a comedic retelling of the Harry Potter book series by J.K. Rowling. And for student council, uh, they recently held officer elections. And this year, uh, I'm president, Laura Claire's Vice President, Odidi and Body Secretary, Sophie Damari is Treasurer, and Max Gregori and Wilson Graham are both junior representatives. And next week, we're holding a T-shirt orders for the student council members. And we are putting on a mob presidential election, which is being planned for all the members of the THS student body. And the week following the presidential election, we'll be having, uh, a week promoting unity. And posters will be displayed during each day of this week promoting unity and multiculturalism. For student government, Mr. Ogden has confirmed that the class banners will be made and displayed in the high school to foster school spirit this fall. Themes for this year's banners will be decided shortly. And for esports, um, for those of you who may not know, esports is a form of sport competition using video games. And it's been offered at THS for two years now. And they compete in four different games, and the games include League of Legends, Rocket League, Fortnite, and Overwatch. And they played against other schools in Massachusetts and schools from the Northeast region, who are also members of the esports organization. Um, and then, the league includes playoffs, which finish with a state championship. And, uh, THS currently have twenty members participating in esports, and they seem to have a great time and there's a huge success. And for college planning, so senior meetings have been, have been, have been being had. And Ms. Gupsterson and Mrs. Ward have met with many seniors in person and virtually to review their college plans. Both minds counselors are available to meet with any senior who has not scheduled their meeting with them yet to review their college plans. And college representative visits, so virtual information sessions are being provided to the students by colleges, weekly to seniors who wish to attend them. And many students took the SAT last Wednesday at the high school. And several THS seniors are finishing their college applications in preparation for the meeting of the November 1st and November 15th deadlines for many early action deadlines and college admissions process. But that's all the seniors in preparing for their college applications.
Thank you. Good job. So, what's your favorite thing about school this year and your least favorite thing?
Uh, mine would definitely be being able to play our sports and be able to be together. Um, right now, what I'm not liking the most is obviously the wifi issue, which no one can do anything about, but it's extremely frustrating being here in the building, trying to do stuff. Especially, I, um, am in a course VHS, so it's all online. So trying to get my hotspot on on my phone, it's, usually I have to go outside for that period in order to even get service. So it's extremely frustrating, 'cause it's fourth period and I have a fifth period, so I have to stay. So that's kind of the most thing that I don't like the least.
Um, for me, uh, just pretty much being here for at least two days, 'cause I know some friends in other towns, like are full remote for their towns and stuff like that. So just being able to be here for my senior year, at least two days a week is cool. And then, um, one of my least favorite things is probably, like, the way we have to take like testing quizzes sometimes now, just 'cause I can't, on some like forms of taking the quiz, you can't go back and like check your answers per se, because once you hit like the next button, it's like gone, so you can't go back and check.
Uh, my favorite thing is probably being able to play soccer for my senior year, especially 'cause I don't think any of us thought we would have a season. And to be able to just have it, and like, even with the guidelines, it's been fine. And then, my least favorite thing is probably just the internet problem, just 'cause it's just been hard the past couple weeks. That's it.
My favorite thing is being, uh, able to come to school for the days that we can, seeing our friends and teachers and learning in person. It's definitely my preferred way of learning. And my least favorite thing would be, I don't have to agree with what Trevor was saying about the not being able to go back on certain testing quizzes and just like not seeing everybody every day, it's less social on online school days.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
So, Mr. Ogden kinda arranged a schedule so that the seniors could be together. Do you find that to be pretty beneficial? You're happy that the seniors were able to stay together for, as a class?
Yeah.
I think a lot of places did cohorts down the middle, I think, you know, because of the size, we were able to do that. So I think, uh, you know, I've heard for my own, uh, senior that she really likes being there with her friends, and I think that makes it a little bit better for them. Um, you know, I think one of the things that we've talked about, we kinda hit it briefly in your presentation, was, um, I think the, the counseling staff did a great job this year. It's the first time we've ever offered SATs in-house during the school day. Um, and given what's going on in, in, in the world, um, you know, a lot of places are forced to cancel SATs. And, you know, a lot of times, our kids have to go to different districts to take SATs. So, uh, one of these councils did what they had, SATs here last week on Wednesday, and, uh, I think it was, it worked out pretty well. I think it was, I don't know how many took them, Mr. Ogden, do you know the total number?
Uh, final number was in sixties.
Sixty, sixty kids have the opportunity to take the SATs on a Wednesday remote learning day, which is, which was great. It was a great strategy, and a great use of a Wednesday remote learning day for those kids.
And we, um, we were within our league alone in the midwatch of twenty-six schools. There were only three other schools that actually applied that they weren't canceling them for the week, so.
Say that again, three, only three?
Only three schools applied that they were not canceling them that completely for the year. So, it's an opportunity to be announced, and we're happy to get that.
That's great. So can you, can you seniors talk a little bit about the, the college search, the college application process and how that's going? I mean, you know, we, we used to do the college expedition, we'd go out to the campus and be able to get your feet on the ground and walk around, see it. How are you, how are you searching for colleges this year?
It's definitely different. Um, a lot of schools, you can't go on campus, but you can, uh, some of them allow you to drive through, like, driving tours. And some of them allow you to go on a tour, but it's limited access into the buildings. So you can't really see like the dorm rooms or the classes or anything. But looking online, a lot of the schools have been posting like pictures and, uh, virtual tours online, and that's been very helpful, with like just seeing it and getting a feel for what the campus is like.
I've done some in-person tours, and then I've also looked up, and my plan is just to apply to all my top schools based on, um, like, my preference of like location, 'cause right now, I'm looking at Florida and here. And a lot of the Florida schools have said to me that, um, once I get accepted, then you can go do an in-person tour, and you can see like the whole facility to decide if you wanna go there or not.
Oh, so to be accepted first, that's interesting. Good to know.
So I went, actually, me and Megan went to, up to Humane and toured up there and in-person, and it was limited. We couldn't go in any of, um, like the dorms, or the library, or like any of the academic buildings, which was kinda weird, obviously. It's not normal, and, um, but the counselors have set up like those meetings that Natalie was talking about online. And I actually went to one, uh, with Suffolk, and it was really, really like, um, they helped me learn about the school more and kinda give me a better idea, 'cause it was like a live person, you could ask questions too and stuff like that, so it was cool. But, um, and then for, I'm looking in Florida, too, and right now, I just, I went down there a couple weeks ago and toured, uh, U-Tampa. And they let me, like, we went in, um, the honors dorms, um, 'cause those are the only ones right now that are acceptable to go in, just 'cause they are distance out more than other dorms, um, but we got to go in some of the academic buildings and stuff. So, some schools are doing it differently, but some schools are obviously limited, like I said, so.
Yeah, I've been able to tour a couple, like, schools in Worcester. I was able to do a drive-through in Holy Cross, and it was really nice to see that campus, yeah. And, um, I've been doing virtual tours. It's a lot different with virtual tours, just 'cause it's hard to get an actual like idea of what the campus is, but it's at least been a little helpful, just like being able to see it.
Well, I have some pictures of my office, you can come over. Put a little data. Anything else you guys wanna share?
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Glad you could show up.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you, Mr. Ogden. That's not my act. Okay. Approval minutes.
I will seek a motion to approve the minutes of September fifteenth, twenty twenty, executive session minutes. October sixth, two thousand twenty, policy subcommittee minutes. October sixth, two thousand twenty, school committee minutes. October eleventh, two thousand twenty, executive session minutes. Executive session minutes not to be released at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry seven zero zero. Correspondents?
Mr. Chair, we have three items in correspondence tonight. The first one is a formal request from the TPA to begin bargaining. As you know, this is the kind of year of their contract, so, uh, they've asked us to, uh, respond to them in terms of when we want to bargain. I know that we have, Council ninety-three, um, is on deck, and I know that we're in the middle of bargaining other issues right now, so, um, I'll work with the negotiating team, find out what networks your schedules.
Sounds good.
The second item that we have in correspondence is our annual adopt the family, uh, letter and notification. Uh, Mrs. Lindsay, Mrs. Fairbanks, Ms. Malus, they do a great job running this every year. Um, it, it, just because we're in a pandemic and we have issues going on, it doesn't mean we're not gonna take care of, uh, the, the community. So, uh, this is a way that we're gonna look to do things a little bit differently this year. Uh, we'll primarily be looking for gift cards, as opposed to purchasing toys and wrapping presents and things like that for families. But it's a great way that our community gives back and takes care of our own, uh, during the holiday season. So that letter is in there for you, uh, as well. And the third notification in, under correspondence is a press release that Chief How is going to release regarding the cyber attack. He's waiting for the school committee to have first look at it tonight. Uh, but he just wants us to know that there's a lot of collaboration going on with other departments, other agencies, both state and federal. And, uh, we're gonna hear a little bit more from, um, from, about technology in a bit, uh, when Mr. Piper presents. But, uh, can't thank the Tinsborough Police Department enough, and we have a great, uh, collaborative relationship with them, and they're very supportive of the school. So thank you, Chief How, and S.R. Robson, for their work at this.
And that's the correspondence. Thank you. Any visitors, comments, and questions?
I see none.
Share the success. Natalie?
So, at TES, now that they have settled into their routines and schedules, grade level teams are moving along with the curriculum and student assessments. Mrs. Kavanaugh stakes that the students continue to amaze her with their hard work, perseverance, and resilience. Also, they have successfully installed Comcast in most classrooms, which allow classroom teachers to share their screens with in-person learners. Over the next month, they will be implementing their new social studies curriculum, and they look forward to reporting students' academic social, academic, social, and emotional progress on the upcoming progress reports and report cards. At TMS, they are moving forward despite the challenges. Um, all their routines have been established, and everyone seems to be settling in to the school year quite well. Their students have been working very hard, along with the teachers. They have some new club opportunities that are starting up soon, the Baking Club, Gaining Club, Knowledge Bowl, which is starting in November, and potentially a ski, a ski club in December. Finally, they are hoping to have some sort of Halloween activity, celebration to help with the students' needs. And in other news, at THS, the October students of the month were announced. And congratulations to Evan Dowling, Megan Hogan, Andrew Rice, and Abby Sorana.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, going back to correspondence for a minute, on, uh, Chief How's letter. Um, Dr. Flanagan, you stated that he was waiting for approval from us, or?
He was waiting for you to see here first.
Okay. Um, it references an attempted cyber attack on school networks? Is the word attempted correct? This is an actual cyber attack?
I haven't seen a letter. Um.
Wait, so without, without verification, I mean, I think it is attempted, without verification.
Okay, alright.
Without, you know, somebody to, to really pin us on it. It's our belief, and I think we're gonna hear more about that in a bit.
Okay, I was just.
Sorry about the, uh, sudden cough attack, guys, I didn't realize my mute button was, uh, was engaged.
That's Cory, we're gonna be with him in one minute.
One second, Cory, we'll be with you in a little bit here.
Okay.
So, we're gonna hear more about that in a few moments.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, subcommittee update, none at this time. Personnel. M. Gothier, a teacher at TES, has requested to extend maternity leave through one-four-two-zero-twenty-one. Unfinished business. School committee update?
So, Mr. Chair, we'll go through our school committee update for October twentieth at this time. Um, we'll go to the first slide. Again, I'm gonna start every reading, talking about context and data. I think we're gonna talk a little bit more about this a little bit later when we talk, uh, about athletics. And I give you some insight there as to, uh, the direction of the board on health and MIA at this time. But context and data certainly does matter, and, and we're gonna continue to study it and follow it as we move. We'll do a next slide, Mr. Piper. As you know, last Wednesday, uh, Tinsborough was categorized in the red. Go to the next slide. So, here are the numbers. Is it, I'm gonna make that a little bit bigger up there on the screen. So we'll start with these numbers. As you know, we had fifteen positive cases in the last fourteen days, eighty-point-nine percent positivity rate. You can see that the number of, of tests are going up, so we could increase there. Um, again, it's just contextual, but this goes to the stat, the COVID status review team that needs every Thursday to discuss the numbers and really understand where we are and where the pattern is, is going. If we slide down to the bottom of this slide, Mr. Piper. So, this is, uh, just a different way of reporting. I think the, the way we reported the cases in the town or in the schools last week led to some confusion, because it was closed out four days before the school committee meeting. So these are current as of today. So you will see, with my notification of those two positive cases at TES today, that we probably have six cases at TES, or had, have had six cases at TES, zero at TMS, and one case at THS, for a total of seven. So that's where we stand right now. I think the, you know, the, the look back on a Sunday doesn't do us justice, because parents know that tests are coming in on Monday, Tuesday. So I think we need to keep this live, but we can talk about that, uh, i- if we wanna see that in a different format. But I thought that made a little more sense for us today.
Can you explain the return column?
So, so yeah, so the student is positive, they cannot return to school until ten days below.
Okay.
So that's, that's the potential return date for, for some of these people.
And that's a minimum date.
Minimum, exactly, exactly. They have to be asymptomatic.
Okay.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you.
So I should actually put a window on that, or a minimum qualification on that.
Early return.
Exactly, yes, I'll put that.
Thank you.
So that's where we are for, uh, for, for the context and data, that's what we'll follow with the, uh, COVID cases. So, we'll go to the next slide. You all know, um, that we've had some technology issues here on North Road. So at this time, Mr. Piper is going to, uh, talk us through what's happened, what we've done, and where we're going, and hopefully answer any questions that the committee may have.
So, on the Zoom call as well, we have Cory Mello from Northeast Technology, who is a cyber company in Danvers, who's been helping us out the past two weeks. So let me just make sure I can, um, get myself off mute. Cory, can you hear us? Cory?
I can, yeah.
Okay. So I'm gonna go over a little, um, high level of what we've been doing the last two weeks, and then I'm gonna swing it over to you, if you don't mind. So as most people know, the past two weeks, we've had some internet issues, to say the least. And just in terms of timeline, if we go back two weeks ago, we originally thought it was a line issue, because we never really had issues here at this campus, which is great. So we had our vendor come out a couple days in a row, um, troubleshooting, they saw some things happening, couldn't pinpoint it. Um, internet was up and down for a while. Couple days later, internet was down all day, um, so we suspected more than just a line issue at that point. So this slide here, I wanna give you a little terminology, because we, we'll be talking a lot about what a firewall is, 'cause that's our main point of, uh, topic right now. So a firewall, as this slide shows, is similar to a brick wall between the outside world and our inside world here. So we have all our devices on our local network inside, including our Power School server, um, student laptops, all of our, our devices, and then the outside world, anything at all outside, websites, computers, servers, companies. But a firewall, in short, really does the job of trying to block the bad stuff from coming in and going out, uh, as well as routing traffic. So every device in the world has a little address to it, and when you go out there, it needs to know how to get there. Likewise, when it comes into our systems, when a parent goes to Power School, uh, parent portal, it comes to our firewall, make sure that traffic is okay, and then rubs it to the proper place in our student information system. So at a very high level, that's what a firewall does. Underneath that is a whole circle of complexities of how you can configure a firewall, uh, the stuff that comes through a firewall, and whatnot. This next slide, for instance, shows over the past thirty days, um, the top one hundred threats and where they've come from in the world, that our firewall has actually blocked. So you can see, in thirty days, we've had traffic from every country, every continent in the world. A lot of it's green, and that's okay, because a lot of traffic that does come in and is blocked isn't necessarily malicious. So although this, this may look like a scary slide, um, some of the red things might be scarier, obviously, than the yellows, the oranges, and of course, the greens. But that's what the firewall does, is block some of them. So what happened this past two weeks wasn't, you are ordinary, I have a computer virus, and must run, uh, must run, uh, Norton antivirus and fix it. So what we fully believe happened this week is what's called a DDoS attack. And in short, what that is, is there's software that oftentimes someone will be maliciously, and again, we don't, we don't have any evidence of that right now, um, or it could be malware. But what it does is it lives on a computer, it gets on a computer, one or more computers. And then there's various forms. It'll either do it on its own, or someone can actually take over that computer or that device and send out what's called bots to other computers, and then either scheduled, again, maybe if it's malicious, or through the malware, it'll command hundreds, thousands, and sometimes millions of servers and computers out in the world, from all over the world, to just flood, uh, a network, a systems network. Um, and you may have heard about it on the news. So, down in the lower right-hand corner there, where it says victim, you can think of that as our firewall. So the good news is our firewall wasn't letting any bad stuff in at that point. That's the good news. The bad news is so much was coming in at one time, that that's all the firewall was doing, was just defending, 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 basically clogging up that door for any traffic to go in and out, hence shutting down, um, our internet. In simple terms, so how do you fix that? Well, once it hits your firewall, there's not too much you can do at that point. So we'll talk about our, some of our mitigation strategies, um, coming up here, and Cory will address that as well. In the past two weeks, though, we have been working closely, as I said, with Northeast Technology, uh, as well as our Palo Alto, that's the brand of our firewall, um, working very closely with them. And then both, both have been on-site a couple of times, helping us out. And what we've done to date is really reconfigured the firewall many different ways. Uh, again, it's very complex, uh, what you can do in there. Uh, we've looked at policies, routing policies, what type of traffic we're blocking. Even to the point of, if you think of this to as Power School. Power School's not just one route to Power School. Once you get here and say, I wanna go to Power School, there's different doors in Power School, different ports they're called. So we have to make sure all of those ports are the right ports for traffic to go to. Um, it's very complicated. So we've been doing a lot of updating of our policies, of our rules, uh, who can access what. For instance, just recently, um, we got rid of a whole bunch of countries. We don't wanna accept any traffic from countries, um, because as a school, we realized we're not expecting traffic in, and so, please don't come here. So that's not even getting to us at all. Uh, the long-term solution for a DDoS attack is what we're going with now through Comcast. And they actually ran the fiber today, which is good news. And what they have is a, a DDoS mitigation service, which really captures all of this traffic upstream before it gets to our firewall. So traffic is really rerouted to them. They have way more analytics than we could ever, um, have here to manage that traffic, to analyze it, and really determine the patterns and, and algorithms they're seeing and say, okay, this is good traffic that still needs to go onto Tinsborough, through their firewall and in and out of their systems. Uh, they'll see the patterns of DDoS attacks and just stop all that upstream before it gets to us. So in theory, our door, um, won't get clogged within DDoS, uh, at that point. As well, we're also looking at other increased protections and mitigations. Um, our wifi, as you know, we have BYOD, um, environment here at the high school. We're looking at adding on to our wifi, more mitigation processes there to make sure that the devices that are coming in our building are one-hundred percent safe, uh, and clean to go on our network. Again, we've, we've been great for the past two, three years since we had this firewall and the BYOD. Um, but in this day and age, as, as you see in the news, with all these big companies being hacked, being breached, um, you can't just sit still and say we're in a good, good place. So that's where we're at now. And Cory, if you don't want, I'd love to turn it over to you to kind of expand on some of that.
Sure, sure can. So, um, Derek, when you called me on the ninth, it was a Friday, um, we did get connected to your firewall. You were experiencing a DDoS attack. Essentially, what that is, is if everyone could envision your internet service coming in into your firewall. Essentially, what these attackers do is they flood your internet. It's called a volume metric attack. Essentially, they just send bad data down your internet line. So the school incoming or outgoing can't do anything. Firewall's not a response to that. It does fill up your lines, so students and teachers can't get in and out of your internet service. It does fill up your lines, so students and teachers can't get in and out of your internet servers. This year especially, especially in the New England region, we've seen quite a bit of this. A bunch of public schools have been attacked, you know, experiencing similar things that you guys experienced in the last week or so. And there are steps to mitigate that risk. So I'm working with Derek currently on, on the first things we want to do, day one items, is we work with Derek to configure the firewall to help it handle these type of attacks. We've also configured it to mask the particular IP address that the school is using. So the way these attacks work, they figure out what IP address the school's using and just attack that IP address and flood the lines. So we're masking the IP address that the firewall is using now, and we have changed it. And lastly, you know, as Derek mentioned, you know, we're upgrading the Comcast line where if this type of attack happens, they have systems within their network to block those type of attacks going forward. So that's day one items that we're gonna get done and get it resolved so the school can be up and operational 100%. Day two items are, you know, we can talk about other things to mitigate this type of risk as well as other type of malware attacks, and just basically getting a ready plan together. It's a, you know, a Tingsborough Public Schools readiness plan. For DDoS attacks, it handles a communication plan to the, to the different functions of the public school, including parents, students, and the school board, and then what the next steps are. So those are some of the day two items we can help with to make sure if something like this was to happen, or something similar, you know, the next attack might not be a DDoS, it could be a malware, or, you know, some type of data encryption. So we want to make sure we're handling all these type of issues in a readiness plan. And then we can kind of walk through that together, make sure you guys are secure if something was, like this was to happen again, or something similar even. Is that helpful, Derek?
Definitely, thank you. Again, I talked about this at a very high level. I know we've talked about it before. So we've currently been down a couple of weeks off and on. And the past two days, we've had staff online, and we've kept students offline for now while we're getting the Comcast line in here, which hopefully will be very soon. Like I said, they pulled the fiber today, they're coming back tomorrow to finish that part up. Then there's some configuration that has to be done, and some firewall changes. We should be switched over to that shortly. What questions do you have?
How effective is the Comcast DDoS mitigation service?
From everything we hear, it's very effective. I mean, I'm never gonna say that anything is 100%, especially in the cyber security world. I'll never guarantee that. But from everything we've seen, heard, and have been advised by, it should be very effective.
Derek, I can speak to that. I have a bunch of clients that use that today. And in the event that that happens, they're effectively able to shut that down.
So...
Or reaches you.
So the service will manage that attack and prevent it from hitting the school, but it doesn't stop the source of the attack? It'll still be ongoing, correct?
Right.
So is there an opportunity to trace the source of the attack? Or is it just so random, we'll never be able to find out?
I mean, people do get caught. I mean, I won't say never, but at least in this attack, what we've seen is the, I mean, they often spoof, spoof their IP address, so they have ways of changing their IP address, so you can't track them down. So again, it can be pretty difficult. So I don't know if Comcast has better ways to do that. And again, with a distributed denial of service, it's coming from hundreds of different addresses, even if they were their real addresses, it's hard to track that down.
Are you still seeing a number of attacks coming into the school currently? And that's why the students have been taken offline, the in-person students? Or is that, I guess, like, what are you seeing as far as traffic over the last couple of days as far as legit versus non-legit?
Yeah, so over the last couple of days, with just the teachers online, it's a little different because teachers have a very secure way of getting onto our Wi-Fi. It's a little more open for students by design. Again, back two years ago, we, we did, did the best we could at that time. Again, you can always do better, you can even do better than better. But over the last two days, we've seen very little bad traffic. I mean, you see all your, your average, you know, scanning things and that, but nothing compared to what we were seeing last week. And so it's a little tricky at this point too, because now we have to go a little bit incremental. That's why all of a sudden, we have an, oh, yesterday was a great day, let's turn everything back on again. Because we've made so many changes with the firewall. Even though it's been two weeks, and that is a very long time, especially in the environment we're in, with all the changes, it's hard to say, okay, we've made all these changes, we're good, let's open it up. We're making changes, we're kind of incrementally seeing how those react, and then going from there to new ones. But over the last two days with just staff on, it's been very good. And again, so again, is that because the students aren't on? And there's something they're doing or have on their machines? Or is that because of the changes we made in the firewall? So the next step is, you know, depending on Comcast timeline, either a full opening, if, if they can get it done quick enough, or we may have to revisit incrementally, slowly bringing up parts of the Wi-Fi for different people.
Yeah, I think that the slower play, and, you know, our goal is to keep kids here in person, right? That's, that's our top goal. So to do that, we're gonna be very conservative in our approach about opening up the Wi-Fi. Hence, we're not live tonight, hence, with students in person don't have access. We heard the kids here are frustrated. They'd be more frustrated if they were home without being in person, I think. So, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna walk this down over and slowly to make sure we do it the right way. By doing that, the Comcast will be up and running, hopefully, in the near, very near future.
Corey, you mentioned other districts are seeing this. Do you have a ballpark number on how many other districts in the state have experienced this?
Uh, I don't have a, um, well, I can tell you we've worked with three or four others in this across the state. You know, the way I could answer that is by percentages, so, you know, there, we're seeing a 300% increase in attacks in 2020. April to the current date.
Were any of those districts or businesses, were, did they use Comcast at the time?
Yeah, so the common mistake among districts that, in my view of it, is that, you know, the, the standard residential lines, although they offer pretty, pretty good, you know, very fast speeds at cost-effective prices, what you get at that lower price is less on the services side. So in those instances where we've experienced those DDoS attacks, you know, you can, we come in and we do configure the firewall to do certain things to kind of mitigate that risk in the attack itself. But ultimately, it needs to be handled on the network. And that, and what I mean by that is it needs to be handled at your internet service provider. So schools, you know, having budgets and kind of getting the internet up and running, it's well-understood that they go for those high speeds at cost-effective prices. The issue with that is you lose on the services side. And one of the most important services is this DDoS service, where on that Comcast network, they can, and it's almost automatic. They've recognized the threat, they shut it down, and then they begin steps to try to figure out who, what, where, when. They're not always effective on that latter piece because, you know, the, the attacks are so dynamic, but there are times where they do catch the individual or the person. And that's really the best way to handle it. Ultimately, you know, you have a line from, just imagine from a telephone pole to your school. You know, the DDoS attack you have now, or had, experienced in the last week or so, fills up that line essentially. Then at your internet service provider, they're able to shut it down before it even reaches your line. That's kind of the difference as to what you're dealing with now and what you'll be dealing with in the future.
Speaking of budgets, what has this done to our budget? Or has it even started to play out yet? And do we need to reevaluate the budget?
So we're always reevaluating the budget. You know, do you want me to see this frame of margins? It's a living thing, it's a, it, it fluctuates every day. We're gonna have to look at that, we're gonna have to see what the annual cost is. Certainly, there's a significant cost that goes along with this. That being said, it's worth every penny at this point to get us up and running and secure for our students and for our teachers. But, you know, once we get a better handle on what it's truly gonna cost, we can come back and have that conversation. But right now, we're still in the, in the process of it. So I think, well, it's probably a first meeting in December conversation. Let's get through the lines and say, here's what we spent, here's what it's gonna cost moving forward. And certainly, as we start thinking about FY22, we'll have to look at our technology line as for sure.
Are we experiencing any issues, or are we seeing any similar traffic heading to E S?
No.
No, okay.
So that's the next question, right? Once we get protection here, as we start thinking about FY22, you know, maybe we can get Corey involved to come up with the firewall, TES as well, and make sure what, what the next plan is for TES. Yeah, we, we have a lot of conversation about technology in the next couple of meetings.
Sure. Sorry to fire more questions at you, but you mentioned that they got to the firewall and they didn't get in the firewall. So that leads me to believe that we didn't have any personal identifiable information that was compromised, is that accurate?
Right, that's accurate.
Okay.
Go ahead, Julie.
Just going back to the timeline, I guess I'm really concerned. And I don't know how this is affecting the middle school students, but I know some of the high school students are doing a lot of work that's online. And when they, you know, are at school and they can't be online, a lot of their work they can't do. So I'm just wondering, can you speak anymore about the timeline? Or is there anything else we can do to help those students so that they can keep doing their studies?
So I would say, yes, it's a good question. So to me, that's instructional practice. The teachers need to change their instructional practices and not rely on the internet for the in-person kids that are here. I will say that Corey and others have moved mountains to get Comcast on-site today. It was a 60-day install, and we got down to 28 days, that they got down to they'd be here on Tuesday. So they're here Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday this week, that's unheard of, the speed that that happens. So we're indebted to him for that. I, I hope within a few weeks, we're up and running and back, and everything's great. But we've had that conversation with our teachers that, you know, we can't rely on the internet for our in-person learning. We still have our kids at home to Google lead into the classroom, and they can do that, which swivels our teacher line open. But we really need to shift our instructional practices for the short term until we get the security, and then we'll be back. Yeah.
Do we need to worry about what's next? So we, we put in the DDoS mitigation. I don't want to get in a situation where we're reactive and we're always chasing the next attack. Is there, the way we can be proactive, you know, are there other types of attacks out there that we're aware of? Yeah, it's gonna cost money, absolutely.
It's all about how much money you want to invest in whatever systems that Comcast can offer at a higher level. So Corey, maybe you can talk about that. Are there tiered services that Comcast offers beyond just the DDoS shield?
Yeah, so I, I can absolutely speak to that. So that, that's getting more into my, the readiness plan. So what we'll do, day one items is kind of mitigate this risk in the DDoS attack. But day two is, we want to have a plan to mitigate this type of attack in others. There's plenty of them out there. The way you approach that is simply start with your service provider, which we're doing today, and work our way backwards into your network. So then you work your way backwards into the firewall, network, wireless, the Chromebooks, iPads, laptops, and some of those items. And we come up with a plan, and we follow best practices related to public schools. And with that best practice includes a readiness plan. And that's a whole communication plan that handles different areas of different attacks. So during that process, you're looking for vulnerabilities. You can take it to any length, and I can go through that with you guys, on where and how far you want to take it. You can even, you know, you can take it as far as hiring companies to try to come in and attack, attack your network, and during the summer, things like that. So certainly, much more we can do. It, it's, the day two item starts with like the discovery. So once you get through this internet service provider, I can kind of go through a readiness plan with the school system so you guys are prepared for the next attack. And I agree, the next attack most likely won't be a DDoS, it'll be something else.
Thank you.
So again, long story short is you're never, you're never in a good place with security, whether it's cybersecurity...
Yeah, criminals are always one step ahead, I understand. But there are certain attacks that'll be more common than others, I would imagine. And I'm sure there's, you know, forums out there, you know, newsletters, whatever, tracking the trends on what types of attacks are becoming more prevalent. So if we have somebody watching that, monitoring, you know, those trends, we can be proactive rather than reactive. So I have a question, is anybody else?
I think, just Corey, this is, this is Mike Moran speaking on the committee. Just as part of the plan and the recommendations for day two would be those options for student laptops and what safeguards and recommendations? Because I doubt they even do if they have a Microsoft device, do they do Windows updates? Do they do their antivirus updates? It depends on, do they keep the security patches, whatever the platform is? Do they keep them up to date? And it's that communications plan that we would need, and, you know, from your firm to us. Because we're educators, right? This team is educators, is all the administrators. And your firm is specialized in the technology field. So those recommendations, as you mentioned, best practices, we'll be looking for that because that's, I think, important, is the partnership with the students as well. Because that's, you know, your weakest link. You can't control that all the way throughout to the firewall.
100%.
Thank you for your time, Corey, really appreciate it.
We'll certainly work with you on that. There's, there's a set of best practices, especially for the public school systems, that, you know, we can go through and recommend that helps secure and make you feel confident about what students are doing, for sure.
Thank you.
That's great.
Corey, thank you very much for your time, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
Good night.
Oh, good night.
So technology being an ongoing topic as we continue with the athletics update. I just wanted to provide a quick update with athletics here at the high school, just so you know, we all know what's going on. Yeah, Ms. Palumbo went to the Board of Health meeting last night. One of the agenda items was seeking local approval from your local Board of Health to continue playing, even if you're in the red. As long as you're following DESI and MIAA guidelines, the Board of Health did approve that for Tingsborough. They're, they're entrusting the school district and community committee to, to make the best decisions for kids. So we talked about context and data. You know, there are some, there are some communities that have stopped playing sports because they're in the red, there are some communities that will travel to communities in the red. You know, our opinion is that we need to look at the numbers and look at where our kids are. And just because we make, you know, this one, this, use this one metric to get red, doesn't mean we should shut down kids from athletics at this point. And I think that a lot of that work is gonna fall on the COVID staff review team. But right now, we have the permission to keep going, even if we hit three, three weeks in red, and we're just gonna follow the MIAA guidance. Specifically, as we start to look ahead, the MIAA is releasing, there'll be guidance coming out next week that will talk about, I forget how they qualify it, but safe sports, mid-threat sports, and high-threat sports, I think it's called, or something along those lines. That guidance is gonna come out next week from an independent advisory group. That guidance will then go to the MIAA. Sports-specific committees of the MIAA will review that guidance and make determinations for how their seasons could potentially proceed this winter. So that's all gonna happen over the next couple of weeks. Once the MIAA sports-specific committees, if it's basketball, the basketball committee, will say, this is how we're gonna play, we're gonna require masks, we're not gonna allow kids to close the guard, whatever the rules are that they come up with. Once they make that determination, it then has to go to the MIAA Sports Medicine Committee for approval. Once that's approved, it'll be pushed out to the leagues to make a determination how it's gonna go for each team. A couple considerations that we, or obstacles that we have to overcome right now. Cooperative sports were frowned upon in the fall season. Cooperative sports, we have, I think, all the basketball in the winter is a cooperative sport here at Tingsborough High School. sport here at Tingsborough High School. So cooperative sports are not allowed, we're going to have to see what that looks like. So that's a conversation we'll have to see, we're waiting on that from the MIAA. And another big, big problem we have right now is, we have no access to a pool. Ms. Palumbo is looking everywhere in the greater Metro Valley region, and has been unsuccessful. A lot of places don't want to share pools between teams, a lot of places just aren't giving time out. So we're concerned about that for us so much so. When we know more, I'll have Ms. Palumbo come back and do a full update, but I wanted to kind of tease that out with this group right now, just so you know that we do have some concerns about winter sports, we don't know what it's going to look like this year. So next school committee meeting is November 10th, and at that meeting, we will do our trimester two learning model vote. Again, I ask that if you want to see something in a presentation for that night, just please get it through the chair on, I think we said October 28th, if you give us time. So if you have questions or would like to see information or any updates, please reach out to Ryan on October 28th and make sure it's included for that night. That's all I have for our school committee update tonight.
Thank you.
All right, 8B, second read policy. I will seek a motion to approve as a second read the following policies. 9.5, accidents or injuries occurring in school or on school grounds. 9.8, student medication. 9.9, physicals for athletic programs. 9.10, school health programs. And 9.13, student staff with life-threatening allergies, LTA.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 700. New business, MASC resolution, will, will Mr. Mullin to speak on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Massachusetts Associated School Committees have brought up another resolution. Therefore, it be resolved that the MASC rejects the calls by the Department of Education to students in class of 2022 who missed their 10th grade MCAS testing to be required to make it up during the 2020-2021 school year or ever. We demand these students be held harmless for not taking MCAS, and that the graduation requirements shall be determined by locally controlled voices of the school committee and the school administration within the remaining graduation requirements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Additionally, we reiterate our call for moratorium on all high-stakes testings for the current school year, so that all students can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction, and we urge the legislation to enact a moratorium on high-stakes testing for the next three years. They're asking for us to consider supporting this resolution, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Do you know how many other districts have supported this so far?
To this date, 127.
So if we do decide to support this, what would be the next steps? What does that mean effectively?
We would just vote here, and then we would draft a letter to the MASC, adding our voice to support for this, and they would send it along to the legislature.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
Assuming this were to pass, is this something that could potentially put Massachusetts and particularly Tingsborough students at risk of not competing alongside other states that would continue to keep their testing?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last few words.
Sure. I was just saying, would this put any of our students or Massachusetts students at risk of not being able to compete effectively in their final years in school, in the public school systems against other states that maybe wouldn't do this?
Currently, Massachusetts is one of the highest performing states in the country. We have been consistently, over the last 15, 15 years at least, possibly more than that, I don't believe that our standing in that would affect us by not taking this test, but obviously, I can't guarantee that.
Natalie, maybe you know, do you have to put your MCAS scores on your transcripts to go to colleges?
I don't really, like, write answers, but I don't believe so.
Okay, so.
I do know that the Abigail Adams Award is based on your MCAS score, so I don't know if that would affect that. I don't know, I know just recently it was announced, but I don't know if this is a test it goes, but I would assume it probably is, because this is the only one they take.
I think for that scholarship, they have to score on like the top percentages, I don't know if the percentage of, involve all three MCAS, so I don't know about that.
Well, so, this is, this wouldn't be a town-by-town decision, this is a statewide decision, so it's an all or nothing choice, and.
That would be something the state would have to figure out a way around.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
I think we need to differentiate, you know, this is MCAS versus like a SAT-type testing or any of those college preparatory ones. This is a graduation requirement to take it, receive a certain grade or a certain score, and then, you know, you're supposedly a proficient member of society, right, after you graduate, along with the graduation certificate that you get. Separately, I think we, you know, can support those SAT-type things or anything that helps students prepare for college and stuff. So I think this is mostly a Massachusetts requirement, not a national requirement. I don't know if colleges are going to hold it against a student if they didn't take this, but I think in support of Rob Mullin's, you know, seeking a motion tonight, you know, for the support of this resolution, is that it's a Massachusetts requirement, and we don't want the kids to have to stress about taking it over in this current situation, especially what we're experiencing uniquely this year. So I think it's a good idea, because it's, just get that aside, and let the kids focus on those tests that are going to prepare them for college or prepare them for whatever they're going to do outside of this.
Absolutely. I agree.
So this is, this is last year's grade, right? So this is last 10th year? What about this year?
Well, to Mr. Moran's point, during the school year, when students are preparing to take the MCAS tests, there's a period of time where teachers are preparing them for it. This is, this would eliminate that prep time and allow the students to continue to study in their, with their regular curriculum. They would not have to leave that to prep for a test. The feeling is, is that these students have lost enough time already from the curriculum last year, and whether they have it all this year, I think it depends on the district. Fortunately, I think Tingsborough was well-prepared for that this year, I don't think that they've really lost anything. But to make that switch to preparing for the MCAS test would still take them out of their regular curriculum, and I just think that this is a good way to keep our children focused on what they should be learning, not prepping for a test.
I agree.
So Rob, are you looking for a motion to support this?
I would like a motion to support this, yes, please.
I'll make a motion to support the Resolution 1 of the MCAS and high-stakes testing.
Let's second that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 700. Thank you, Mr. Mullin.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
9B, homeschool applications received. Alentina Stamp, students in grades one, two, and five. Finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eight bill warrants were presented to the committee tonight. I do have them all back approved. In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts in the mouse. No signing of payroll tonight, we'll do, catch up at your next meeting. Also, tonight is your September 2020 financial packet is in the drive, that three reports, it's the school committee's budget as of the end of September, the student activity account at the end of September, as well as the revolving account balances. And I will leave the October 1st enrollment to the chair.
Thank you. At TES, we have 740 students. TMAS, 394. THS, 451. 22 out-of-district students, for a total of 1,607 students in the district.
And just one item under other, if I could. The USDA and Department of Ed just recently announced that the food service program that we're currently applying for, the Seamless Summer Option, when they first brought it to us, there was some concern that it may not, would last until December 31st or until the funds ran out. The USDA did get approval to run that through the end of June.
Excellent.
So once we get that all approved at the state level, all type A lunches that will be served will be free to the students in the district.
That's excellent. Thank you, Mr. Messina.
Thank you.
School committee discussion. Natalie?
I'm off second.
I have nothing to add.
So I'd say thank you to Derek and your team for everything that you have been putting into trying to keep everything running and try to get us back to where we need to be. It's been, you can't imagine you've gotten any sleep over the last two months, so thank you.
I'm good, we eat. Chair?
I'm off second.
I'm off that tonight, thank you.
Just one comment, and it's really for the people at home. If you have comments or you have questions about anything going on, please contact your school principals or school teachers and ask them directly. Not everything we read today is true, so if you would please reach out personally, and we would all appreciate that. Thank you.
I just want to thank Mr. Ogden and the students from the high school who came tonight. They did a wonderful presentation and gave us a good picture of what they're experiencing, and the pros and cons of everything they experienced, and I want to thank everybody for pulling that together. Thank you.
I'll echo what Jeff said about the technology team, thank you for that. Dr. Flanagan, thank you for keeping us informed and making sure that we had the information that we needed as a school committee, I appreciated that. And also, thank you to the teachers, you know, they've had to adapt on the fly to be able to do their jobs and continue to educate our students, so thank you to the teachers for making it happen.
I think you hit the nail on the head with the teachers. They got thrown a curveball, they got thrown a curveball this past week, which they have to make a nice job of staying in there, and not fighting, so I appreciate all the work that they've put in. And the kids, you know, our kids are resilient, you know, they also are dealing with adjusting, and they're doing a great job, and they're going with the flow right now, and we appreciate their flexibility, and I'm happy to hear that they like to be in school with their friends, and I like the social part of it, it's not what you want it to be, but it's better than it was, and we're going to keep moving in that direction as best we can. The last thing I'll say is, welcome to Emerson Traynor, congratulations to Mrs. Traynor, who had a daughter today, so.
Oh, right, congratulations.
Mom and dad, daughter of both families, so that's all I got.
Excellent. Thank you to Mr. Ogden and the THS students, it's, I say it every time, it's my favorite part of the year, when the students come in and talk to us. Derek and your team, I'm not missing the position you've been in lately, just great job just working relentlessly in countless hours to keep the Wi-Fi going as strong as it could be, and finding the long-term solution, you know, we all appreciate it. Thank you to Corey, too, taking the time to be here and explain things and working with you guys. Echo what you said, Becky, the teachers, the students, as if this year wasn't crazy enough, now we have cyber attacks in little Tingsborough, I mean, who would have thought? So just great job by everybody responding and dealing with the craziness. Hopefully, that's the end of it, but I'm not going to hold my breath. So with that said, we do not have a need for executive session, so I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 700, we adjourn, have a good night.